Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role.
Bram Cassoun.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Summers.
Absen.
Wit.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Burr.
Absen.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval minutes?
We have two minutes tonight, one from common council meeting, May 3, 2016, and one from May 19, 2016.
I have a motion to approve both minutes. Alvin Johnson, seconded by Alvin Kleiner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
Okay, we have a request for a handicaps on in front of a house at 30 Prince Street, and it's thanking you in advance, your friend Victor Lamiscosa.
Forward to DPW.
We also have received a correspondence from the county on a home and business owners for going solar in the Mid Hudson Valley.
Received and filed.
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address this council, please step forward.
Hi, I'm Warren Kelly, I think you remember me. Sorry you took me so long to get back, but I've had a bad winter, I've been sick a lot. And I'm getting a hard time on my mold problem, and I am tired of it. We started this back in January. Okay, now, I received the summons to go to court because I failed to maintain the property, which is my closet that is full of mold from three leaks in there for five years. I let that go. Now, we've been to court every month or twice a month trying to get this done, and it's not getting done because no one seems to want to make the landlord do what he is supposed to do. May 1, he gave me a notice of eviction. That was fine, called the lawyer, they said, "No problem, you have to wait until he hands you court papers." They said, "The state police or something usually hand them to you." Well, no. Come Monday, the landlord comes knocking at my door, handing me the papers, which the lady head person of Legal Aid in White Plains said is not normal and is not legal. I'm taking care of that. I now have Legal Aid. I do not, I, this is your town, people. I've lived here for 16 years, since my husband died. I moved here because I don't have a car, because I'm a very independent person. I can catch the bus here, I walk to ShopRite, I walk to Walmart, I can go to see, I can be independent, I can get the bus to go to Middletown Medical. And I have to leave now because a landlord does not want to, I'm gonna leave anyway, I'm telling you that. I can't stand his face anymore. Doesn't want to pay, do you know it's gonna cost him thousands of dollars to replace that closet? Because the walls in the closet are seeping with water and full of mold. My whole closet is mold. I am breathing this stuff in. I have a letter from my pulmonologist. I got it back in March, I haven't used it yet, that this is not good for my health. I have COPD, I have asthma. I'm sure there was something else I wanted to say. I just have so much going on inside my head, and I am so tired of getting aggravated. Why do you let a landlord in your town? How do you expect to keep, and I consider myself a decent person, that is my opinion. And Boris, who is a building inspector that does my building, has always come in and said, "I wish everyone would keep their apartment like you do." I sweep the outside, you can ask Tony Baffers, I watch the block. I've been threatened, I can't tell you how many times, because I will not let drugs be sold there. I'd go in and tell Tony Baffa when they were getting out of their car to go sell the drugs, and if you don't believe me, you know, then go ask him. There is no drugs going between Beatty on Estria Road and East Main, because I won't live that way. I'm gonna be 67 next month, and I have never been through anything like this in my life. Who is this landlord? Whose pockets is he going in? And whoever doesn't like it, I don't care. I have pictures from back in 2013, the date is on my daughter's computer she sent to the landlord after I was in the hospital for 23 days for a fungus infection. This is the United States, where do you get a fungus infection from? How about mold? She sent him those pictures, the beginning of that June. He ignored them, did nothing, and I have these pictures if anybody thinks I'm lying. I took more in 2015 because I had it.
You need to wrap it up.
All right, anyway, you, Mr. Mayor, know I have those pictures.
There's a little bit of misinformation, if you don't mind. If you don't mind, step aside, I'll respond to you. Mrs. Kelly is correct that she came to the city regarding a bed bug problem and a mold problem. We contacted the landlord immediately, the landlord hired the appropriate professionals, and the reason why Mrs. Kelly was cited for the problem also was that she refused entry to both the pest control people and to the repair. So we had a problem with her refusal to allow someone into the apartment to make the repairs, and the landlord, who is ultimately responsible for making the repairs. So we took both of them to court, and that is where the issue lies, is that there is not an expectation. We acted immediately when she came in with her complaints, but after several attempts that were verified by the building department, the landlord was not given access to the apartment by Mrs. Kelly. So that's how it stood. I hope you have better luck in your next apartment, but it's obvious that this has been going on for quite a while, that you and the landlord are, for whatever reasons, are not getting along, but I can assure you of this, that the apartment will be condemned until the repairs are made, but the repairs, whatever the relationship between the two of you is, you refuse access to people, and it's-
I do, would you like to hear something?
Okay. I'm not gonna get into debate with you, I'm just trying to give an explanation.
No, no, no. I gave you the opportunity to come up here, and I thank you for telling us the story. That is it. We're not gonna go back and forth.
Yeah, it's not gonna be, I'm not trying to get into debate, all I'm telling you is giving you the facts, that we immediately went on this issue of two things, both bed bugs and mold. And the, you cannot blame solely the landlord if the repair people come, make an appointment to come, and you refuse them entry. That's just, you know, that's unreasonable, and that is why you received the summons to go to court, so that the judge, because you saying one thing, he's saying another, so we let the judge sort it out. So that's where it stands.
I want to say thank you to Mrs. Kelly for coming up and telling your story, and thank you, Mayor, for clarifying, and that is it.
And I have one more thing to clarify, no, I'm gonna say it. I refused to let the people in. He came on February 3, I remember the date, a rainy date, I had pneumonia. He came with some guy at 2 o'clock in the afternoon with no papers, wanting to come in and knock down my closet with me in there. I said, "No, where's your papers?" Came back at 5 o'clock that evening with a phony card, had no picture of it, and I have a witness there, a lady from the Health Department was there in my apartment when she came. I took down his information, I could not read his ID number, so the lady from the Department of Health wrote it down. Now-
That's why we sent it to the judge.
No, Ms. Kelly.
The Department of Labor.
Ms. Kelly, the time is up, time is up. Thank you, thank you for coming.
It's not over. It's far from done.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Yes, good evening. My name is Marina Escobar, this is my husband Abe, and we live at 311 Wayway Onda Avenue here in Middletown, 4th Ward, going out towards Slate Hill, and I'm here to speak about our traffic problem, which is getting worse by the day. We lived in this house for 44 years, it's always been bad, but the past year has been unbelievable. We have construction going on behind Middle Crest Crossing, so we have dump trucks, construction vehicles going by, starting 5:30 in the morning, I can tell you what time they go to work, and then about 3:30, 4 o'clock, they fly by the house, going the other way, and we also have Preferred Mart, which is at the end of Wayway Onda Avenue before the orchard, and now we have tractor trailers going by our house all day long. To make matters worse, we have ruts in our road because the city put in new water lines last year, right in front of our house, dug the road, there's like four ruts going all the way down to the light. Now, since we've had tractor trailers, the ruts are getting worse. Every day they're getting worse. Today, somebody lost a big bag of topsoil off their truck because they were going so fast. We called the DPW at least three times last month, left our number, asked someone to please come out and address this issue, look at the road, nobody's called us, nobody's come. We've been in touch with Officer Bailey, starting the end of last year, he came out to our house, and he promised us all these things that were gonna happen. We went away for a month in February, came back, and nothing had changed. We never see a police car out there, every once in a while, a trooper will stop and give somebody a ticket, but we don't see Middletown Police. I've emailed Chief Bethencourt a couple of times, it's just getting worse. We have children out there, we have pets out there, you back out of your driveway and hope, hope, somebody's not gonna ram you. And our, I know you're concentrating very heavily on Highland Avenue, our problem is a little bit more unique, because they're coming down Wayway Onda Avenue at a 55 mile an hour speed, and then they get into the speed limit, they don't even care, they still do 55 till they get down to the light. Highland Avenue's tucked in quite nicely, all around 30 miles an hour, and we don't have wide roads like they do, we don't have sidewalks, we're just left on our own, and it's just horrible. And I wish someone would come out and really take a look at this, maybe sit in unmarked cars and just watch, and see how many, what I'm saying is true. And like I said, Officer Bailey, he was very kind, and he told us he was gonna do this, that, and the other thing, we haven't seen anything being done, and we get a lot of promises, but we don't seem to get a lot of results. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, I don't know who put the traffic counters, you know, across the road. Now, was that the county, state, or Middletown? Does anybody know?
I'm not sure.
The state. The state?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so then you could get information from the state as to how much traffic goes through there, and I promise you, it's gonna be a lot more than Highland Avenue, okay? And believe me, until those ruts become real deep and somebody loses an axle, maybe the trucking company will start complaining too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Barbara Kelly. I know my mother was up here speaking, and she's very upset, and she gets very emotional, but she has a right to be. If I had not gotten involved with her on what's been going on, I wouldn't believe what she had said was true. I have repeatedly made phone calls to different agencies, looking for help for resolutions with this matter, and continually, the buck gets passed, and nobody knows what to do. This is a health issue in a building that has gone on for over three years. She has tried to get help to get it rectified, and that does include going to your office, because I was with her. Okay?
Do you respond to her? I'm more than happy to respond.
Something needs to be done. She was threatened by her landlord, saying she can't win against him because he's got too many friends in this town. There's people's health at risk here, and this guy is allowed to, I shouldn't say that, I apologize, not that he's allowed to do what he wants, but he seems to get away with an awful lot. There needs to be a system of checks and balances. I'm floored that the city inspector's office and the building inspector didn't make sure this was rectified when the incident happened. We found out there's still a leak by an inspector, she had to pay for herself. There's gotta be somebody to help people when they have a problem, instead of the buck getting passed. And now he served her with an eviction, if she gets kicked out, what happens if a mother and her child move into that apartment? How sick are they gonna get? We are now awaiting the results from tests that we paid, she paid for, to find out how much mold was in there, because the landlord would not pay for testing to be done, only an inspection. And when that mold, when that assessor came in, he had, he had a hard time breathing, he felt it in his throat. She is looking, everybody says, "Just move." Well, that's great, but when you're on a limited income, it's really hard to do that, and there's not a lot of cheap studio apartments. She signed up for senior housing, but there's waiting lists. I wish I had the money to take care of her and get her out of there, but you know what? This is a fight worth fighting, because this can't go on, people's health are at risk, and nobody cares. I'm gonna try with the county health department again, the Attorney General, I'm not gonna give up on this either, but it would be nice if we had some help along the way, instead of people just blowing us off, and that's what's been happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I needed to reinforce with the public and with the common council, is nobody blew Mrs. Kelly off, and that they received, as a matter of fact, I believe Mr. Massey, the alderman from that ward, was in my office when she came, and within, within one hour, we had an inspector in her building and in her apartment, within one hour. We had the landlord in, and I need to reinforce this over and over and over, that she refused access to the repair people and to the pest control people. We don't like taking tenants to court over a code enforcement violation, or code violations. I don't remember it happening too many times here, but the multiple times that she refused, we felt it was the only way to resolve it, was within the courts, so the judge can order the repairs and order her to give access to the landlord and to the repair company. No one is ignoring her, no one is taking it lightly, her health issues, but every time she has come to City Hall, we have met with her immediately, and we have responded immediately. But when you don't have a willing recipient of the code enforcement rulings or decisions by code enforcement ordering the landlord to make the repairs, the city cannot go in there and do it. We took action, we could have condemned the apartment, that was one option we discussed with Mrs. Kelly, but by condemning the apartment, that would mean she would have to move out immediately. So I don't know what the communication problem is, but it's, there is, continues to be a problem, it is a very serious problem, and that's why the judge in the city court is addressing the issue, or has addressed the issue. We'll follow up again tomorrow, we'll give you an update on the next common council meeting, or by email, on the status of the judge's order, and if any repairs were done, but I can assure you, and I want to make sure that, especially the people at home that are watching, that within one hour, the inspectors were there, and within a day, they had repair people there, and I don't know how many times the attempt was made. So we'll, we'll follow up with the board, and we'll post the results of our findings on the website.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing? Because I handled it with the, with the gentleman that came out to do the repair. He was there to tear her walls out for $75. I took his information and went to the New York State Department of Labor to check his ID. It was fake, it was made up by the landlord. I went into court, I tracked down the license holder of that number, that mold license number. He came to court and appeared before the judge, told the judge that he would not do what the landlord wanted, it was illegal, and he wouldn't do the job. We can only guess or assume that the landlord took his information and made up a false ID card for one of his workers.
Okay, we are going to look into this, we're gonna address it.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Remarks of department heads. New full-time corporation counsel?
I have nothing to say. Do you have any questions?
It's a long walk to say that.
Any questions for Rich?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Economic development.
Good evening, everyone. Just to update you, we had a CDA, Community Development Agency, meeting this evening, and our first home that we rehab for homeownership program through the CDA will be closing on June 16th, so we're excited to have that be completed and get a homeowner in there, and, and move on to the next group of homes that we're looking to rehab under the homeownership program. Also, yesterday, there was an announcement from the state and Sunny May folks, which I believe the mayor will touch upon under his remarks, this will just enhance our homeownership program. Also, under our Community Development Block Program, we have about approximately 12 homes out for housing rehab right now, so Jean and Patty and all them are very busy with this program. Concerts, the farm market, all that is underway, and tickets are on sale for Charlie Daniels' Band July 9 at the Paramount Theater. That's all I have for this evening.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. Police chief. Welcome back.
It's nice to be back, thank you. It's nice to see you all again. By the way, I was a recipient of one of the houses 20 years ago, through the city's program through community economic development. It's a good program, I'm glad the city has started it again.
I think you should donate it back. You're still complaining you overpaid.
We'll move on. So just to give you an update of the initiatives that we've taken for the summer, the patrol division, we've increased the amount of staffing on the 4 to 12s, starting Thursday night and going through Saturday. We've also increased the amount of staffing that's gonna be afforded to Officer Bailey to work on different quality of life issues, and I'm glad that the Escobars have here and brought this issue back to my attention again. I was unaware that it wasn't as effective as we believed it may have been. In reference to the, the trucks, they mentioned that the state police have been issued tickets, I just want to say that the state police are here working with the city in reference to that particular issue, but also other issues involving quality of life. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank Major Tripodo from Troop F Headquarters, who has continued to give staffing out of Troop F Headquarters to the city to help us address different issues, in particularly, the weight issue in reference to some of those vehicles. But it's important to note that as a police department, we can't stop the vehicles from using the roadway, we can only enforce violations of the vehicle and traffic concerning those vehicles, whether they're overweight, speeding, et cetera. I've issued a directive recently in reference to fireworks, because that issue has seemed to rear its ugly head very early on this summer, and the directive is simply this, when we encounter illegal fireworks, we are to take appropriate police action to include ticketing and/or arrest if necessary. But a message to the residents, if you have a question of whether or not the fireworks are illegal, before you make the purchase, you can contact the police department to get an up-to-date, up-to-date information as to what is legal and what is not legal before you make the purchase, so that you're not found in violation, because we're going to have a zero tolerance early on, so that we don't have the same issue that we had last summer, especially around the 4th of July. We have a couple of new officers who are finishing up their field training very shortly, which we will be deploying singly, which should help to curb some of our overtime in reference to the increased staffing level. Some of them should be ready, I'm told, by early July. And that's all that I have, unless you have any questions.
Any question for the police chief? Thank you, chief. DPW commissioner?
Good evening, all. I just want to touch very, very quickly on the code enforcement, the program that we have, we have great pride in our code enforcement program, and I'm very sorry for the experience that this lady is having. The mayor is absolutely accurate of what he stated, that according to our inspector, who's assigned to the case, they attempted to do several entrances into the building in order to affect some repairs in there, and that has been denied, and that was the, that's why the corporation counsel had to take both the tenant and the landlord to court, and that matter is still pending, and, and, you know, without cooperation from both sides, the matter will not be resolved. The mayor was absolutely right, we could have done it, we could have condemned the apartment immediately on the spot, and that's something we don't take lightly, and we don't like to do, because that means people are gonna be displaced, they're gonna have to go find somewhere else, and that's not a good situation. So we jumped on it immediately, like the mayor was saying, within an hour, inspector was going over there, inspected the site, contacted the landlord, and honestly, we don't care who the landlord is, I just want to say it, because that department is under me, the code enforcement, we don't care who it is, what his name is, what his background is. Our, basically, our role in here and our message is quality of life. City of Middletown is one of the few cities in there, I think it's the first to institute rental permits in there, and inspection, annual inspection, and semi-annual inspection for single, even single-family homes, and issue rental permit in there. I mean, we're being, we are being as intrusive as the law will allow us to be, in getting into people's homes and inspecting them when they are rental. Of course, we can do more, we can always do more. Again, my sincere apologies for this bad situation, and I feel your pain, but hopefully with cooperation from both sides, that, that issue can be resolved and addressed. Regarding the, what you have before you on the agenda tonight, there's a bond resolution for Sterling Street Sewer Phase 2, and that's an important project for us, it's a very old sewer line in there that has, that has deteriorated over the years, and in need of replacement, with different methods of construction, whether it is cure-in-place casing that will go inside the pipe, some sections will have pipe bursting technology in there, which will make the pipe larger in there to be able to handle more flow, and some of it is gonna be open-cut, conventional replacement of the pipe. That will be happening through people's backyards and through easements from Grand Street all the way into, all the way up to Sterling Street. Another section of this project will be on Wisner Avenue, under the railroad crossing for North Fork Southern, and by Midland Avenue intersection, and that, the pipe is almost, almost collapsed in there, the sewer pipe, and we need, we need to replace that. So I believe with the council president approval of my request to have a resolution from the floor for approving the low bid, to be awarded to sunup enterprises in the amount of $1.55 million, you have a detailed resolution before you, and thank you very much for accommodating us with this request. This project will be funded through EFC, and we already have grant $150,000 from EFC. We're gonna have also zero interest loan on this borrowing, so it's free money for us. We expect to close on the, on this borrowing, I believe, in October, at the late- And thank you very much for accommodating us with this request. This project will be funded through EFC, and we already have grant and $150,000 from EFC. We're going to have also zero-interest loan on this borrowing. So, it's free money for us. We expect to close on the, on this borrowing, I believe, in October. At the latest, EFC assured us that it's pretty much guaranteed that the closing will occur, but they can't guarantee anything until it happens, because they are just employees of the state. ESG, I think, Richard, he gave his blessing to the amendment, the last amendment to the contract that was signed for, with ESG, for the energy optimization project for replacing HVAC and roofs and owning the streetlights, owning, replacing the water meters in homes and all that project. And we're looking forward for that project to get started. I just want to address, we had some water issues, taste and odor issues in, in May, and, and that was due to algae bloom in one of our reservoirs. Just to give you some, some milestones in here, we found out, we went to address the problem on May 12th. May 17th, five days later, we were able to pin down what the issue is. We were able to flush the system. It changed to a different reservoir that feeds our system, and the problem was, was solved as far as odor is concerned in water. But we continue to treat the algae in our reservoir, which is the main reservoir in Manhattan. We're gaining, we're gaining on it. We're getting some success, but we are still fighting that battle with the algae bloom on the Manhattan reservoir. Last weekend, just, just to mention how our water is, we went, we took our water for contest for the Earth and Water Festival, arranged in Orange County, and we won, our water won the second place. It was three, three votes short of New Windsor Water, which basically, it comes from the aqueduct, which is New York City water, which, you know, New York City, they throw all kinds of money to protect their reservoirs and their source of water. And so, we're very proud of that results. I wish we won it, but we did not. We were three votes short, so we came second place. We, on Friday, we had a water main break in Maryland Avenue. We attended to that. The men took care of it right away. The street paving is going to start in the second week of July, and we're going to be putting some, some, the name of the streets on our websites, and you may, you may want to discuss, you may want to ask me some questions. I'll get into more details if you wish. And last, in May, we generated $54,000 of revenue at our wastewater treatment plant from, from the septic haulers, from people from outside the city of Middletown. $54,000, that's a number we've never seen in any month since we started back in 2006. We're very proud of that, and that's another example how our, our infrastructure, once we take care of it, we keep it updated, it will generate revenue for us. And with that, I will yield for any questions?
Question, Alderman John Francois.
Far as the algae in the water, do we know how that happened in the first place? Can, can we do anything to prevent that from happening in the future?
Algae, algae is a natural occurrence in the water. Sometimes it's, it's, you, you just have to be alert and you have to be looking for it throughout the year. And sometimes it happened because of factors from within the reservoir itself, and sometimes you have factors that happens outside the reservoir, meaning in the watershed area. At this time, we are working to have watershed, watershed control ordinance. As you know, our watershed is outside the city, so it's going to be very tricky for us to put ordinance in the books in there. That's going to be enforceable by, by, and outside, by other municipalities in there. We're working on that. In two weeks from now, you're going to have a proposal before you from CDM Smith for, for developing these ordinance, which is the watershed protection ordinance. So, it comes from within. One, from the reservoir it comes, and sometimes from outside the reservoir, when you have fertilizers and phosphate and all that stuff being diverted into our reservoirs. You may have read the story about Newburgh, as an example, city of Newburgh, the last couple of days in the paper, about how development in there is affecting really, is going to be hurting their single source of water, which is Washington Lake. Things happen. We're going to be, you know, proactive, and, and we are addressing it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Witt.
Thank you. Commissioner, thank you for addressing the, the road repair created by the Orange and Rockland work. Will you be able to, do you think, maybe narrow down some timeframes for certain streets so people have an idea, sort of a little bit of a range, when, when that work is going to be done?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that question. We're going to start, like I said, in the second, second week of, of July. And usually, we start milling, and we mill by about three or four days, and then the asphalt paving will start. And we will post that schedule, tentative schedule, on our website. And we have the milling machine, the contractor lined up. We have the paving contractor lined up, so we're ready to go. And we have the names in here, from Grant to Sprague to Railroad to Watkins, to all the, all the roads that Orange and Rockland have worked on. And we're going to be charging, right now, we're negotiating with Orange and Rockland, the mayor and I. We met with them numerous times in there. We're going to make them pay for half the road, or at least half the road. You met with us too, as a matter of fact. You walked with us and you saw the, the trading, horse trading that we made between us, and this is, you know, this is wide enough, or not wide enough. So, we're going to make Orange and Rockland pay for, for half the road for milling and paving, paving it as well. And, and that's, you know, that's something we, we developed. The mayor and I, we've never done this before, and they seem to be receptive. Now, we're arguing how much it is per ton. They're going to be paying us. And hopefully, we're going to have a meeting soon to resolve this matter.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else like to ask Jacob a question? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
John?
Nothing this evening.
Any question for John? Okay. Oh, sorry. Don, city treasurer. How'd I forget the money man?
As you all know, I put the 2015 financial statements in your mailboxes today. They were issued May 31st, which is the earliest they've ever been issued. And if anybody have any questions during the week, feel free to call me. And the next meeting, Dominic will be here to give the independent review to you all.
The 21st?
Yes.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Don. Mayor, any comments?
Nothing this evening.
Before we go to Alderman comments, I just wanted to update the public and the council on Alderman Summers. As you may know, Alderman Summers was hospitalized. She's wanted to let everybody know that she's doing better, she's improving. Alderman John Francois is in contact. I'm in contact with her. And our prayers and wishes for her to get better are with her, and hope she'll return soon. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey. Nothing this evening. Alderman Reconso.
I'm only going to remind everyone that the annual kids' celebration, formerly known as Dare Day, will be this Saturday at Thrall Park from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. In the absence of anyone from Parks and Rec tonight, a reminder that summer is coming and summer registration for kid programs are, is open. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. I know the hours ladies had a couple of things with respect to Ms. Kelly, Mrs. Kelly and her daughter. I think we're all here for the same reason, for quality of life. And I think that conversation was disheartening from the quality of life perspective. I've also, at times in my life, talking to a policymaker and being frustrated and saying, "Well, policymaker, if this was your mother, would you resolve the problem more quickly?" And I think, when given the opportunity to advocate for a parent and you do so, it's a good day at the office. The young, the ladies came up and were speaking with older woman, Ram Cassuna, myself, and my perspective is, I'm not really going to argue about yesterday. I'd rather focus on tomorrow. So, I hope that the dialogue, which I don't think was an appropriate venue, but nonetheless, can get us to tomorrow, where we can have better communication and better resolution. Maybe we need to start over with the conversation, see where it goes. Thank you very much for your listening.
Thank you.
I did attend the Community Affairs Bureau meeting on your behalf on May 26th. I'm not going to go over the whole itinerary. I am struck, at that particular meeting, both the Wallkill and Middletown law enforcement were present. I know we kind of talk about seriously and also jokingly about co-municipal events where we work with the town of Wallkill. In a meeting like that, we're reminded of the fact that our boundary with the town of Wallkill kind of weaves throughout our entire community. And when you are talking to law enforcement, I was very happy to understand, without going into detail, there are a lot of law enforcement initiatives that take place where Wallkill and Middletown are cooperating with each other because of our common boundary, and I think that's always a good thing. I was also reminded by the Assistant District Attorney that when you try to coordinate stuff at the county level, there are 34 law enforcement agencies, plus state police, plus the sheriffs, and there's not always communication between one agency and another. So, when you're trying to administer a drug program or whatever other program, it can be difficult, because people who tend to not follow the law don't always stay in the same place, and the computer doesn't always tell you where you went when you left. Two other things. I wanted to remind people that the social host law, this is all in your boxes, is in effect in Orange County. We've hit Memorial Day. We're going to go through the summer. There are going to be graduation parties, July 4th parties, variety of family picnics. And the DA's office wants to make it clear that the social host law is in effect. And what that means is that if you are knowingly serving alcohol to a minor in your home, you will be held responsible. The key word there is knowingly. If you're on vacation out of the country and your children decide to have a keg party, you're not doing that knowingly. But if you're watching TV in the basement and kids are in your backyard drinking, and that becomes a knowledge of law enforcement, the first offense, speaking of traffic fines, the first offense is a $500 misdemeanor, and the second offense would be $1,000 and up to a year in jail. It's serious. If you are the adult, you are responsible for any child that is on your property, your child and somebody else's child at the same time. And lastly, I wanted to bring your attention to there's an initiative to have a public forum on Thursday, June 16th at 7:00 PM at the Orange County Emergency Services Center on Wells Farm Road. DA Hubler is excited about this. It's called Heroin, a Public Forum on Education, Treatment and Law Enforcement. There will be a variety of speakers. The target audience is educators, parents, and perhaps high school-age students to understand some of the, some of the issues related to heroin addiction. And you don't have to listen too, too clearly to know that it's a big problem, both in Orange County and throughout the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Witt.
Thank you very much. I just very briefly want to remind everybody in the second ward that our ward meeting is July 13th, next Monday at 7:00 o'clock, right here. Hope to see you. Thank you.
Kevin, you said July. I think you meant June.
June. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Alderman Massey. June 13th.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I'm going to try and talk fast here. I want to thank Post, American Legion Post 151. They had Memorial Day services with that rain forecast that turned out to be nice, but who knew? So, the services were up at the Legion Lodge, and I thank them for that. It was a nice combined service. The Classic 10K was this past Sunday, and again, I thank Frank Shorter for coming back to his hometown. I think it's nice he does that. I thank Bob, I thank Bob Beeman for being here and giving a motivational speech to the kids in Middletown, you know, and, and Frank Giannino, who continues to put the event on. I know it closes the streets, and that's another issue I want to bring up. The Elks had their Angelman's Walk. We had discussed that in, in our DFW committee meeting, and we did talk about whether the streets should be closed. We said, "Why can't they do it on the sidewalk, et cetera?" And they didn't know how many people they would get, so they wanted to do it on the street. The understanding was that as soon as they passed the street, the street would be opened. That understanding did not get passed along to the, either whether it was the police or fire police. And I expressed some reservations before we did that. We're probably not going to do that again. We really want to limit these street closings, and when we do close streets, the, the police be commended, to be commended for, after the Classic 10K. They very quickly opened the streets as the last runners went by. So, we're going to tell people, I think it's common counsel, President Rodriguez has said, "If you have this kind of walk, we're going to find another place for you to do it." It does not trap residents within a circle. On that note, this Sunday is the Ruthie Dino. And it's, it's a great event, but the YMCA will not be surprised by this one, because I believe they're the sponsors of it. And, and we'll get the word out again, we want the streets open as soon as possible. You know, after that, we'll, we'll have the fire parade. We'll have other reasons that we close it, but we really do want to minimize these street closings and, and the inconvenience they have for people, especially people who need to go to work who get trapped in their houses, or people need to feed their kids and can't get home. We need to be much more reasonable about allowing them through. There will be no Citywide Watch meeting this month, so we will have one again in July. And I want to wish Sandy the best. Get well quickly. We want her back here. The sparkling devices legislation, the chief mentioned that, that will be tough on the fireworks enforcement this year. That legislation has passed the Assembly. Unfortunately, in the Senate, it's been in Codes Committee. There was a health issue with the chairman of the committee, and they're trying to move it out. We hope it will get passed. It won't be in time for this year, but we certainly hope that Middletown will be able to prohibit the other kinds of fireworks too, so that we can really enforce it and make the Fourth of July safe for everyone. We do a great fireworks display. The county does a great one, and, and, you know, we don't need people in their backyards risking the roofs, the house tops of their neighbors. And whether they missed anything, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman John Francois.
Yes, good evening. It seems like everything I had on my note tonight is already being covered. So, I just want to say to Sandy, we all praying for you. We love you for a quick recovery. God bless you. Come back soon. Thank you.
Thank you. New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, to authorize a treasurer to accept $2,190 from Litero Corel Tal Publications as rebate for services rendered 2015 to 2016 for services and supplies for senior center designated for special events and suggestions of members.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to authorize the mayor to sign an engagement letter with the city's auditors, PKF O'Connor-Davis, for three years, 2016 to 2018, maintaining the same annual fees that have been in place since 2010.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to authorize the mayor to sign a renewal agreement with CPI HR for one year to be compliant with the Affordable Care Act with no changes from the prior year.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, to authorize a treasurer to accept a donation from Middletown Honda in the amount of $250 for the city's neighborhood watch program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to authorize the mayor to sign a proposal with BNL to assist the city with the administration and preparation of funding applications for the Middletown Community Campus redevelopment project and transfer $25,200 from the fund balance to fund the project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to authorize the mayor to sign a proposal with BNL to assist the city with the administration and preparation of funding applications for the Middletown Community Campus redevelopment project and transfer $25,200 from the fund balance to fund the project. with BNL to assist the city with the administration and preparation of funding applications for the Middletown Community Campus redevelopment project and transfer $25,200 from the fund balance to fund the project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, to authorize the closing of Highland View Place at Oak Ridge Road and at 39 Highland View Place for a neighborhood block party on Saturday, Saturday, June 11, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, to transfer a total of $10,000 from the water fund balance to cover the cost of additional unbudgeted services for testing liquid copper sulfate applicator due to the unexpected algae bloom at the Monhegan Reservoir.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to authorize the upgrade to the main plant SCADA of our water treatment facility and to transfer a total of $12,200 from the water fund balance to fund the upgrade.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassun, to authorize the asbestos removal of 99 Wickham Avenue in the amount of $12,000 by FF Contracting, New York, Inc., based on three quotes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Rayconso, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to approve changes to the zoning code, Section 475-22(c)(3a) Limited General Business Districts, to remove uses under subsection B, large retail stores, wholesale business establishments, hotels and motels, and service establishments for service other than a personal nature.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, resolution to authorize the SECRE notice for the intent of the common council to serve as lead agency for the Intigo Water Site Supplemental Supply Easement Agreement, and has determined that it constitutes a Type I action in accordance with 6 NYCRR Part 616-SECRE.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
Very quickly, the SECRE, the, it says what, Fire Protection Emergency Services protect the site. We have Greenville Fire Department, unless they don't believe they were just...
Yeah, it's also Mount Hope Fire Department.
Yeah, Mount Hope, Mount Hope Fire is fine, but I think we just need to strike Greenville Fire Department.
Oh, strike.
Why would you strike when you don't know? What does decertification mean? Does it mean it can get reestablished?
Probably.
Organized, right?
Yeah.
I'd rather err on the caution of leaving it in there than omit it and have someone challenge the SECRE saying, "We didn't notify them." But I know they've been decertified, but that doesn't mean there's still not an organized, valid agency or department.
Okay, so I just, all right, as long as we're... Anyone else? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Alderman Johnson?
Per the commissioner's request, I'd like to offer the following resolution, resolved by the common council of the city of Middletown, that the council awards the construction contract for a total of approximately $1.5 million for the Sterling Street Area Sewage Collection System Improvement Projects, Phase 2, to Sunup Enterprises, Inc.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. Per the mayor's request, I'd like to offer the following resolution, resolved by the common council of the city of Middletown, that the city allow SCANSO to use approximately 11 acres of city-owned property on Route 11 West in the town of Wallkill, shown on the tax map of the town of Wallkill, is Section 49 Block 1, Lot 14.21, for the loading, unloading, and storage of containers and steel in connection with CPV project under a list of terms and conditions.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Rayconso. Any discussion? I see the mayor.
The, we apologize for the short notice on the resolution. This was a proposal that had came to us late last week, and which CPV, or companies who are constructing CPV, were looking for the storage space for containers and some steel that will be being used in the construction of their facility. The advantage to the, they went and out, you know, throughout the area looking for different sites. This site is actually in the town of Wallkill, so they had to begin with the town of Wallkill Supervisor's Office. The advantages to the city, and we feel, and presenting it, that there are several advantages to the city. One, we've been filling this site for probably 10 years.
2006.
2006. It began under President Rodriguez, who was then Third Ward Alderman, with the ultimate goal of this site becoming a ball fields. The total site is 24 acres, but I believe the cleared area currently is 11-plus acres. There's also a connecting road that will connect in the back, across the proposed Heritage Trail, and into Davage Park, and the ultimate goal is to make this all part of the Davage Park facility. The remaining work at the low end for the city remains an upwards of $250,000, probably more than that. We just had some ballpark numbers presented to us. What we are, what they have offered to the city for the 11-acre site for the use and storage, this is just use, this is just storage, there's no construction, there's no commuter parking, there's just loading and unloading of steel onto containers and going out to the CPV site through the county Route 78 Avenue, so going straight out of town, is a couple things. One, we had discussions with them in which we made it a requirement that they use the furthest gate out of the city, which would be the site next to the old emergency room bar. Two, they would have to construct the road, finally, final construction of the road between this site and Davage Park, including the drainage that I, from what the council president tells me, is collapsed. The road comes underwater, and some very serious problems. Three, they will have to grade the property, level, put in the item four that would be necessary to keep any dust down from trucks going in and out of it. And at the end of the lease, which would be a one-year lease, they would then bring five inches of topsoil on top, make reassurance that it's leveled, and then the, they would hydroseed the property. They would also fence the 211 side in with a six-foot-high fence that would be opaque, and I think that was at the request of Alderman Johnson, that, so you won't be able to basically see what's going on behind, behind the fence. As I mentioned, the lease will be for 12 months. They'll have one option of three additional months at $1,000 a month. So the maximum use of the facility will be 15, 15 months. At the end of the lease, they will improve it to the point, and all under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works, that this will be ready for us to then make additional ball fields. I think the council president has expressed an interest in softball and soccer, because that's where we have a shortage of fields, I believe.
Softball and senior ball field. We only have one.
We only have one, okay. Well, the use can be decided by the city at that, at that point. But Jacob, as I said, has done a quick analysis. We, I did have a discussion at the end of last week with the, no, not the end of last week, Monday, with both Alderman and the Third Ward, and, you know, that, they all had the biggest concerns, and of course, the council president lives in Pilgrim's Estates. Might be some short-term inconvenience, but looking at it now, it's not very attractive. I think we can all agree on that. Just piles of rock and dirt. That, that will now be behind the fence, and 15, anywhere from 12 to 15 months from now, we'll have children playing on the ball fields, and we'll have what I think will be a huge improvement to that area. So as I said, it's not an agenda item, because the discussion has just started last week. They need an answer, or they can move on to their other possible sites, but I think it's advantageous to us to entertain it. You'll be authorizing me to sign, but only after approval of both the Corporation Council and the Commissioner of Public Works. Any questions?
Question for the mayor? Alderman Johnson?
Mayor, we discussed this privately, but just now that it's understood that it's town of Wallkill, how exactly does that work for us to maintain our ball fields in property owned by the town of Wallkill? Do you see annexations somewhere way down the line, or...
Well, I don't know, but we do have parks now that are in the town of Wallkill. Some of them, one of them, the dog park, for example, is currently being annexed into the city as part of the larger annexation. But across California Avenue, the pavilions there, they are in the town of Wallkill now. So it's not a problem. The only problem is if there's an incident. Middletown police can still respond on an emergency, and the police department works out things with, both police departments work out things on mutual aid calls. But it's not, it's not a problem of us owning parkland outside the city. If the town of Wallkill at some point desires that we annex it in, I'm sure we would welcome it for park use as, with open arms. There's no, there's no tax benefit to Wallkill, to having it there. Our main, the reason why we acquire the properties is because our main water feed into the city comes through there, was part of the old Prokopoff Agreement, and that's how we obtained the property. But, so we have a couple options. One is the, let it sit and just keep filling it and leveling it as we go along for maybe another 10 years, or, I don't think it's suffering, but I think we'll put it up with something for maybe 12 months and having a nice ballpark, and kids running around in a year or so. Any[1711.36]